On behalf of Ed Carney, Chamber President, we would like to welcome you to the 2020 Candidates Forum. I also want to take a moment to thank the Apple Valley Chamber of Commerce Board, Bogarts, our generous hosts, City of Apple Valley for TV coverage beginning this weekend, Speed Pro signs, and most of all, our candidates for your public service and your desire to make Apple Valley a better place. It's my honor to introduce Scott Katerlik, our moderator.
Thank you, Tasha. Welcome all the candidates. Just so everybody knows, everybody is seated in alphabetical order. There was no other easy way to do this, so that's the way we've done it. The way the forum's going to work today is you're each going to be given a one-minute introduction, tell us about yourselves, then I will begin asking questions of each of you, and we'll finish up with closing remarks from each of you. So, just to let you know, I am a resident of Apple Valley. I have been married and live here. My children have gone to Apple Valley schools. I was a former Chair of the Apple Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm a business owner, I'm a taxpayer, and I vote. So, everything you say matters a lot. We're going to begin with the introductions, and we're going to start out with Linda Garrett-Jackson. Please tell us something about yourself.
Thank you, it's Linda Garrett-Johnson. And I am a small business owner, entrepreneur, of an organizational development, business process improvement consultancy. I have over 25 years of public policy and community engagement experience, and my leadership style is to serve and elevate stakeholder voices to be able to influence the key decisions that may impact their life. The City Council is the voice of the residents of the city and its stakeholders. However, many of those voices are not currently represented through the current composition of our City Council. The Council can't be your voice if it doesn't engage you in ways that really hear from you and bring you into the planning and decision-making process. My name again is Linda Garrett-Johnson. One reason I'm running is to elevate your voice on the City Council and help the Council understand how to engage you. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda Garrett-Johnson. Please welcome Councilmember Tom Goodwin.
Thank you, Scott. My name is Tom Goodwin. I've been a resident of Apple Valley for 41 years. Been on the City Council for a great number of years. And it's a wonderful place to live, and all the years that I've been on, I keep seeing the city getting better. We have very few problems out here, and I'm just very happy to live here, and I think if you like the way the city's been run, it should be reflected in your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodwin. Councilmember Ruth Grendel.
Thank you, Scott. Hi, my name is Ruth Grendel, and I'm currently proud to be a member of the Apple Valley City Council. I hold a Master of Arts in Public Administration and an undergraduate degree in Urban and Regional Studies. Besides fulfilling the local responsibilities of being a council member, I've represented the city as the MVTA Commissioner, where I was elected Treasurer and Finance Committee Chair. I was elected by Dakota County Cities as the GIRS Representative. That's the Grant Evaluation and Review of Metropolitan Transportation Projects. All the cities actually came to the Capitol to vote for one candidate to represent the county. Chair Peter Bell from the Metropolitan Council asked me to chair the Minnesota Livable Community Advisory Council, for which Apple Valley's received a number of grants, including the Splash Pad at Kelly Park. I've served as Deputy Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Public Service for eight years, representing the consumer before the Public Utilities Commission on Gas, Electric, and Telecommunications Rates. I've also had two gubernatorial appointments. One was to the Minnesota College. College is a university, I was a trustee there, and I was the elected Vice Chair and the State Representative to the National Association of College Trustees.
Thank you, Ruth Grendel. Mr. Joe Landrieu.
Hello, and I'd like to thank you, Scott, and thank the Chamber, and thank the city for being here, and also for spelling my last name correctly. It's commonly misspelled, so thank you for that. A little bit about myself, my parents moved to Apple Valley back in 1975. I think I was probably gone for a short stint through college. I have been on the fire department for a little over 19 years here in the city. I graduated, or I went to school at Greenlee Elementary, Scott Highlands, and I graduated Apple Valley Senior High School, so I've got some roots here. I was fortunate enough to graduate as well from St. Mary's University. My wife and I are also, we have a small local business that we own. I consider myself very fortunate and lucky to want to live where we live and to be an American, so that's a little bit about myself.
Thank you so much, Joe. Christian McClary.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Christian McClary. I'm 24 years old, and I am a proud resident in Apple Valley community. I work in St. Paul as a council member for Blackmail Success, where I voice my opinion and my advocacy for housing equity, mental health and wellness, employment services, and education. I'm really happy to be here to celebrate the 50th anniversary with the Commerce, so thank you and staff for organizing this event.
Thank you so much. Now, we'll get into the question-and-answer period. I will ask a question, you have one minute to respond. You will not be all getting the same questions, but we'll move around the group. Beginning with Linda Garrett-Johnson, what is your vision of what needs to be done in Apple Valley as you look 10 years into the future?
So, I hope 10 years into the future that the City of Apple Valley will have learned how to better engage the community and the residents and the stakeholders in public policy and the planning of the city. For me, it's important, that's one of the key things that I feel that we really need to be doing. The other thing is that I really think that we need to address the affordability of housing. We have, our rents are fairly high, and so are the mortgages for the individuals that live here. And so, I think that addressing the affordability of housing is also important. And then finally, I want to make sure that we are engaging both the business community and the individuals who live and work here. Again, I really think that for me, the most important thing is that we have, you know, in 10 years from now, that we would be known for a city that understands how to do community and stakeholder engagement in one that is really, really a prize, that we're able to have, be known for that.
Thank you, Linda. Councilmember Goodwin. Minneapolis and St. Paul City Councils have passed laws requiring paid sick leave, paid sick leave, excuse me. The mayors of those cities believe that this should not only be passed in their cities, but also at the national level. How do you feel about paid sick leave in our community?
Well, thank you very much for the question. Those kinds of things should be really taken care of at a state level. One of the problems we're having these days is you have this city doing that, this city doing this. It gets very, very confusing. And I would say, those kinds of things, so if state paid leave is going to come in, well, state paid leave would have to be passed by our legislature. What we do, as you probably know, we have to obey the federal and state laws that tell us how to run a city. And right now, that's not part of it, but if in fact it becomes that, we would certainly embrace it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ruth Grendel. What's your vision for the needs of Apple Valley over the next 10 years?
Vision for the needs?
Yes.
Okay. And actually, in engaging with the community, most people I talk to are very concerned if we would be defunding our police department. In fact, I was out raking on Sunday, and a woman stopped and asked if I was Ruth Grendel, and was very concerned about this. So, I think 10 years out, our vision is, first of all, we don't have a lot of land to develop anymore, and so I think maintaining... Our house was broken into two years ago while my husband was home. I understand what having a well-funded police department does for this city. So, I'd like to keep crime low, taxes low. I think I'm always the visionary on our budget, and I'm always trying to keep our taxes low and our services high.
Thank you very much. Joel Andrew. Have you ever attended a City Council meeting or a Planning Commission meeting?
Yes.
What did you feel was important at those meetings?
Probably the most important thing is city and citizen engagement is the number-one thing. For the most part, I believe Apple Valley does a good job with their format and encouraging that kind of thing, and I think it's relevant and it's necessary for the city to actually to function. If you don't have city engagement, you don't go anywhere. I firmly believe in that government should be based on consent of the governed, and at our national level and in our state level, unfortunately, that is being forgotten or abused, and we need to kind of get back to the civic engagement, which I believe is based on the Constitution and based on consent of the governed.
Thank you very much. Christian McClary. The world is changing. People are working from their homes is becoming more common. What can the city do to improve internet speeds, safe delivery services, and office services?
Yes, so when we talk about broadband access, I'm reimagining a city where not only are we being accountable, but we have some type of sustainability so we can move forward and grow as a city. And I know that we do have a lot of those committees, but we need more of those in all different departments, especially for workforce and employment. So, when we're thinking about labor and the growth of at-home work, we should really put things in place, and something tangible in place too, in which the residents are the biggest recipients.
Thank you very much. Linda Garrett-Johnson. Do you feel term limits are necessary at the City Council level?
I definitely do. We should not have anyone on the City Council that's been there for three or two decades. That, to me, is something that does not allow for people to bring new ideas to the City Council. It doesn't allow for creativity, it doesn't allow for innovation. We definitely do need to have term limits.
Councilmember Goodwin, I've recently seen a report that said that Apple Valley pays the least amount of taxes of any city per capita in our county. If we're not paying the most, are we getting all the services that we deserve as residents?
Yes, we are. Thank you very much for pointing that out. Yes, the state auditor has recently pointed out that we have the lowest per capita total property expenditures of the 11 major cities within Dakota County. There are no services that are provided traditionally to a city like this that we're not providing. Matter of fact, some of our services, I think, are exceptional. Public safety, police and fire. I am 100% very strong supporter of both our police and fire. They do a wonderful job. And no, there is no subject that I can see, our parks are second to none. Our parks are absolutely second to none. When there used to be ratings, we used to be rated like top three or four. I don't know if they still rate anymore, but we're doing a great job. And one thing we're doing a great job is we have some council members with experience who know how to handle the city budget, who know how to ask the right questions to the city administrator, and that's, I think, one of our strongest suits.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Grendel. A city's draw is sometimes measured by its restaurants, entertainment, nightlife. Do you feel that Apple Valley has done enough to support food and beverage establishments, brew pubs, and the nightlife that we're looking for?
Well, as often as I go out to eat and entertain myself in Apple Valley, I would say so. We frequent many restaurants here, and with the recent CARES money, we definitely made sure that we would take care of the entertainment industry here, and I think we have $400,000, and I think that it's going to 36 entities at this point, and we were very concerned at the end about the food and beverage and the entertainment, and we've opened it up again. So, sometimes I hear of issues about our restaurants open at 1:00 and 2:00 with some crime issues, and so I think we need to stay on top of that, but outside of that, I think we support our businesses quite well.
How about brew pubs?
How about what?
Brew pubs.
Brew pub, well, we would like to get one. If anybody's listening, we would be interested in getting a brew pub, yes. That's the one thing we don't have in town.
Great. Joe, what should Apple Valley do to provide better job opportunities, fairly-priced housing for its residents?
I think right now, in the immediate needs, what's important to note is our current environment. I am not a fan of the restrictions. I believe that, or let me be specific, I guess, the restrictions that have come down from the governor. I understand the need for public safety. But getting to your point, the immediate need right now is to get people back to work, so that's where I'd be pushing back. I'd be pushing back to say, we need, at the city level, local level, and I've seen this all throughout the metro area because of what my day job entails. People need to go back to work, people need to go back to school, need to have these businesses open, and the longer that this stuff is shut down, the worse things are going to get.
Thank you very much. Christian McClary. What skills do you possess that will make you a good City Councilmember?
So, being one of the youngest people on the ballot, I'm really hoping to engage more youth and young adults, as well as the elder community. In my entire life, I always acted as a bridge between elders and the younger community. And I see a lot of that leadership here in Apple Valley, where because I even entered my name in a ballot, so many young people registered to vote. So many young people walk with me to get more information about what's happening in the city as it pertains to public safety, as it pertains to public works, as it pertains to education, broadband access, internet, and employment for their parents. So, I think that's a valuable skill that comes with me, and also providing some diversity, equity, and inclusion work in all aspects.
Thank you very much. Linda Garrett-Johnson. What is your solution to make Apple Valley a safer place to live, work, and play?
One thing I think is important is I have done some community engagement conversations with people in the community. They feel like it would be helpful to have like a human rights department or a human rights commission, so that people who do have challenges in the community have a place to bring those challenges and have a dialogue and a conversation about them. Part of the challenge that we have right now that we're facing is that we don't know what we don't know. We don't know if everything is going well in the City of Apple Valley. We don't know if we have a problem with the City of Apple Valley. So, along with having a human rights department or commission, I'd also like to collect more data. It's the business process improvement person in me that would like to go out and grab some more data, so that we can take a look at where we really are in the City of Apple Valley. And then I'd like to have us transparently report that information out to the city in a way so that we can all engage in dialogue about what the next step should be, if we do see that we have any issues or challenges.
Thank you so much, Linda. Councilmember Goodwin, what do you feel the biggest challenge of Apple Valley is today?
Thank you for that question. I think the biggest challenge we have is we have about 400 acres of gravel pit left, the Fisher gravel pit. They've done a great job developing what they have, they've developed it mostly with housing, but what I'd like to see with the remaining 400 acres is to get as much commercial development as we can get in Apple Valley. Now, why commercial development? It's really very simple. Commercial development pays property taxes at twice the rate of single-family homes. And anything we can do to have more commercial development is going to relieve the single-family taxpayers of a burden. Let me give you an example. The two Target stores pay enough property taxes, the same amount of property taxes, as 261 median value homes in Apple Valley. That gives you an idea. That's why I'd like to see more commercial growth, especially in the new gravel pit area.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Grendel. Over the years, tell me one thing that the Council has passed that was very good for the citizens of Apple Valley, and also tell me one thing that didn't benefit Apple Valley.
Well, gosh, this might take more than a minute, I'd have to think about that. I think the important thing is, for us, the success we have is that we have two AAA bond ratings, and that we continue to maintain that for lower taxes, and so I always, I think we pride ourselves in the budget and very minimal increases for our businesses and taxpayers. Okay, so what was the other question, our what, our worth?
Tell me something that you passed that didn't go so well for Apple Valley.
Well, you know, our chambers aren't often packed with citizens. I think that citizens here are rather, are happy with the direction of the city. Right now, I think our biggest issues are pickleball and chickens. And if, we have a strong committee system in Apple Valley, and I'm not sure, when we're talking about not being engaged, I haven't seen names being asked to be on these committees, but those are some issues, you know, whether it's people who like pickleball or not, or chickens or not. So, I'm just happy that those are our most difficult decisions right now, when I look at what Minneapolis and St. Paul and other cities are, their challenges are right now. So, those are two things we have to tackle.
Oh, the evil pickleball. Joe, what neighborhood do you live in, and what are your favorite places to spend in our city? Where do you spend your time?
I live in the Scott Development. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. It's pretty much Galaxy Avenue and 142nd is the neighborhood that I live in. I actually personally am an avid runner, so I run through the city, and I enjoy, for the most part, I enjoy where I'm able to run. And on the downside of that, of course, there's quite a bit of traffic. My wife and I do enjoy going out and spending some time at local restaurants and stuff like that, so whenever something new opens up, or, you know, we have friends that might own a business or something like that, we try to patronize that as much as possible. I think that's, it's very important to do that, spread whatever resources you may have in the community with people who live in the community and businesses in the community.
Thank you very much. Christian, we've just been told that our taxes are the least paid, we pay the least amount of taxes in all the cities in the county. Are there services in Apple Valley that we're not receiving because we're not getting the money?
Well, yes, and I think although we make a statement and we're still the lowest, let's see how we can reduce and make it even lower, because we do have housing issues within the city. Whether we recognize it, acknowledge it or not, it does exist. So, I'm not necessarily for raising taxes on everything, but if there are some gaps within our budget that we receive, then how about we come as a collective, involve the community and residents, and say, hey, we have a pot of money, what should we do with some of these funds? And as I think about it, I think about some of the CARES Act money that went out to businesses, and there was an article that said only 3% of the CARES Act money was spent, and we received 3 million as a city.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to take the next time period. You each get one minute to have a closing statement. Tell us why we should be voting for you for City Council for 2020. Linda Garrett-Johnson.
Well, I want to thank the Chamber for hosting, and I want to thank all of you for watching. The one thing that I want to say is that Apple Valley is a great place to live for some people, not for everyone. Some people feel that they're engaged in the city. One of the reasons that I, as I've been talking to people in the community, I have been actually implementing what I'd like to see done on the City Council, is a community engagement model, something that I have done in other cities, and something that I have helped other cities and other entities facilitate. One that actually brings, it's a continuous model of engagement. It's not where we're being asked to react to a plan that's already been put in place. So, as I'm winding down with my campaigning, I'm doing this community engagement models, they will end the end of next week. Please take a look at that on my website, which is www.electlindagarrettjohnson.com, and I would be honored and humbled to get your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda Garrett-Johnson. Councilmember Tom Goodwin, your closing remarks.
Thank you. Well, we've already talked about some of the great things in Apple Valley, the lowest property tax expenditures per capita, and the double, the double-triple bond ratings we have. We're also one of the last cities, we're on one of, sorry, one of the only cities in this county to not charge for special assessments when we have to rebuild a road in front of your house. Now, that's a very, very important thing. And that's one, and we're getting an awful lot of thanks for that, especially from the older community, because a lot of folks, when they get older, they're retired, and you come by for a special assessment, they're not too happy, I'll tell you that. But we're totally, again, very supportive of both public safety departments we have, and talk about community engagement. Our police chief was starting a community engagement program, and he started it, and the first meeting was supposed to be March 25th. Well, what happened, the 1st of March? COVID came. It got canceled. I asked our chief if he's willing to continue, starting with more community engagement and policing, and he said he'd be more than happy to.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Councilmember Ruth Grendel, your closing remarks.
Thank you, Scott. First of all, I do want to point out that we do have term limits, and it's called an election every two or four years. And if the voters aren't happy, they certainly can vote for other people. Now, I'm going to ask for your vote today because I'm supportive of the direction Apple Valley's going. First of all, like I say, we have two AAA bond ratings, standard and poor ratings cited strong management with good financial policies. The Apple Valley preliminary total tax levy increase in next year's budget has Apple Valley at 4.3%, Eagan at 5.4%, Lakeville at 6.5%, and Birdsville at 7.0. We have the lowest per capita expenditure of the major cities in Dakota County. Apple Valley is at $763 per capita, Eagan's at 964, and Lakeville is at 1,057. Road reconstruction is one thing that we have not mentioned here, that we do not, it's, in the $763 road reconstruction, if your road is totally redone, utilities redone, or maintenance, it is included in your taxes, and so you could have received a $15,000 to $20,000 special assessment, not happening in Minnesota. At the same time, we have a robust park system, well-funded police and fire, clean roads, safe drinking water, and the list goes on. And so, with these accomplishments, I say, I please ask for your vote.
Thank you so much. Joel Andrew, why do we want to vote for you for City Council?
First of all, thank you very much for letting me be here. I'm asking for your vote. I don't believe in identity politics. I believe in character of people. I consider myself lucky to live here in Apple Valley, to be an American. I'll work hard, I'll be accessible. If you need to get ahold of me at all for right now, my quick way to get ahold of me is vote joelandrew@gmail.com. And then I ask, when you do vote this year, whether it's for me or for somebody else, to consider a couple of things. One is clarity. You know, make sure that you vote for somebody whose values are yours, that you share, not just because you share the same party. So, be clear on what their values are. Another one is, if you vote for bigger government, be rest assured that bigger government means less freedom for you. And so, I, my proposal or my attitude is a tough-on-crime stance, law on taxes, light regulation, and worker freedom. And so, I'd be honored to have your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Joel. Christian McClary, round it out.
Yes, thank you. So, support. I am willing to support the community, I'm willing to be held accountable, I'm always looking to learn and grow with experiences. A vote for me is a friend on the council, and that's what we need. And one thing that I noticed, because I wanted to bring up, is our communication between the municipal government and the community should be a little bit stronger. The navigation on the city site can be sometimes difficult to go against for people to find information, so making sure that we engage all communities in the city with many platforms, whether it's mailing, whether it's social media, but making sure that we are held accountable and making sure that we can hold each other accountable.
Thank you very much. I want to thank, above all, I want to thank Bogarts, I want to thank the Apple Valley Chamber of Commerce for hosting today's Candidate Forum. I think everybody's done a great job. I hope that the rest of the election season goes well for all of you. I want to thank the city for filming today and providing this information. It'll be on the city website and Cable Access for viewing these candidate forums. Each candidate forum that we did will have a separate television showing, so you don't have to watch all of them, but you can watch the ones that are important to you. I want to thank Tasha Wells, the Friendly Neighborhood Realtor, for inviting me. Thank you, Fabiana, for all the hard work. And again, I want to thank all the candidates for their hard work, their commitment to their community, and thank you for coming out today. Enjoy the day. and thank you for coming out today. Enjoy the day.